Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk call the roll of the members.
Councilor Cooperrow, Councilor Teneri Garcia.
President.
Councilor Robinson.
Yeah.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Lopez.
Yeah.
Councilor Vega Molinato. Councilor Avonada.
Here.
Councilor Brown. Councilor Vido.
President.
Councilor De Jesus.
Present.
And Councilor Judy Garcia.
Present.
Nine members present, two absent.
At this time, I'm going to introduce and have our fire chief, Leonard Albonisi, please enter with the cadets who are going to be inducted tonight.
Good evening, City Manager Ambrosino, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to once again appear before you for the swearing in of the newest members of the Chelsea Fire Department. These ceremonies are important to both acknowledge their achievement and to impress upon these men the gravity of the responsibilities that they are assuming as members of this historic fire department. As you have often heard me say, the fire service today is ever-changing and more dangerous than ever. Today's firefighters are facing an era where fires burn hotter and faster than ever before with the prevalence of synthetic man-made materials used in interior furnishings. They must also be trained in a wide variety of disciplines, including emergency medical services, technical rescue, hazardous materials, and response to acts of terror and violence, to name a few. This profession requires sacrifice, dedication, and commitment, and I challenge them to strive to be better firefighters each day. On behalf of the department, I extend our congratulations to you and best wishes for a long, safe, and rewarding career. Now, I present the following members for their official appointment to the Chelsea Fire Department. Davani Soto-Haya. Ronnie Gomez. Adam Giancola, who is the son of Deputy Chief Paul Giancola. Edwin Sola. Alexander Monterrey. And Nicholas Bridge. And I now call upon the city clerk to administer the oath. Madam clerk?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your names. Do Somley swear.
Do Somley swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That will faithfully.
That will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
And coming upon me.
And coming upon me.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
Of the Chelsea Fire Department.
Of the Chelsea Fire Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
My abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
Laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
The City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
And now we will conduct our badge pinning ceremony. First, to pin firefighter Davani Soto-Haya is his girlfriend, Rosa Romero. To pin Ronnie Gomez, his brother Pedro Castellanos. To pin firefighter Adam Giancola, his fiance Nicole Loftus, who was escorted by his father, Deputy Chief Paul Giancola. And to pin firefighter Edwin Sola, his father, Fedenzio Sola. And you'll have typed the pictures after as well. To pin firefighter Alexander Monterrey, his mother, Amy Neal. And to pin firefighter Nicholas Bridge, his girlfriend, and Somerville firefighter Brittany Taylor. What's good, Council President? Thank you. Firefighters, you are dismissed, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Before we take a brief recess with the families and the new firefighters, take the advantage and come up here to the, well, I just want to say thank you to Chief Albonisi and to the city manager. I know that their recent efforts, the city council has always been very supportive, making sure as part of ICIP that we buy and have the best of equipment for firefighters. But recently, the chief was able to secure grant funding that allows a purchase of smoke detectors, radar smoke detectors, that can be personally put on each firefighter that helps him guide himself through the fire. And I know that he's making every effort to make sure his men and women come back home every night. So again, thank you very much. We will take a brief recess at this moment. The meeting is now back in session. We will now start. Our next item on the agenda is public hearings. There will be a public hearing regarding to amend section 34-241 by adding in alphabetical order the definition of electric vehicle collision repair. A copy of this can be found at the Chelsea City Council office, 500 Broadway, room 306. This is solely for a proposed change in zoning to allow electrical vehicle collision repair in the shopping district. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, and solely this matter, please step up to the microphone. You'll have four minutes. State your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Bon Giovanni. I'm at 46 Galulee Road, Chelsea, Mass., 02150. And I am totally against this, totally against this. I've lived in Chelsea, I'm 75, I've lived in Chelsea 69 years. And this is the first time I'm really hearing it, very shortly, my husband saw it in the paper. The owner who bought the paintball, well, I don't know if this is to do anything, this before, he would come to us until you changed the zoning, but I'm against the zoning. Why do we need a Tesla repair shop in the city of Chelsea? How many people in Chelsea own Teslas are going to be able to afford Teslas? This is just like coming to Chelsea like they did a few months ago and dumped the asbestos where they shouldn't have. They don't think of going to West End, Wellesley, Newton, Natick. So come down to Chelsea and change our zoning so that we can have a repair shop where the paintball used to be. That's ridiculous. So we have to worry about the noise, the dust, the garbage debris, the hours. It's really, it's unbelievable. And another thing, the owner, that's what he wants to do, why didn't he reach out to his neighbors? He certainly didn't reach out to me and my husband. I don't think he's reached out to anybody. That's all I have to say. I'm just totally against it. And I think it's ridiculous to change a zone just to accommodate someone who just comes into the city. I don't know where he lives. He just comes into the city, so you want to accommodate him so he can do what he wants. And I've been there all my life, and I don't even know about it. So just accommodate all these outsiders who want to come in from wherever they own these wealthy towns. I'm sure he doesn't live in Chelsea, and you know, just create whatever he wants, maybe because his business is going to bring taxes to the city of Chelsea. Ridiculous. More mess, more garbage, more noise. The people down in Parkway Commons, they're not paying $400 or $500 a month. I don't think anybody's paying $400 or $500 a month. They're not even paying $1,000. Some of those people down there are paying $2,800, $3,000 or more. They're all people that work in Boston and who can afford to live there. But I'm sure they're paying that rent, and they want to see a car place, a repair place, or because, maybe they might, because it's a Tesla, it's an expensive car, it's an electric car. It's ridiculous. Just accommodate all these wealthy people, and whatever they do, just come into Chelsea, dump everything into Chelsea, and don't care about the simple people. It's absolutely ridiculous. I'm totally against it. Thank you.
Good evening. Anthony Bon Giovanni, 46 Galulee Road, registered voter, for all the records. The zoning change, it was posted in the legal section of the Chelsea Record, stating that tonight it was for the public to speak. I do live less than 90 ads away. I could choose my wedge, and I can hit that building from my house. So that's how close I am. Furthermore, the residential area of that zoning that you guys have changed is only maybe 100 feet from the residential proposed that it is on paper. So I don't know how you look at it and how do you go about. Now, legal says that any resident within the border of a changing zoning or license or anything should be certified or notified by a certified mail. I haven't received anything, and none of my neighbors. This is something that was built in a fishing place where the fish does not move quick enough, and it stinks. So think about it. Think about what you are guys proposing to. Changing the name, it does not change what was in the paper. And I can remember exactly that it said it was for the electric cars to change windshield, brakes, battery, and collision. Collision means that you have a painting job. You have a repair shop that is going to do body repair. And it does not make any difference if you have an electric, a gas, or a gasoline car. They all use the same paint. They all use the same bonding. They all use the same bending and everything with it. And that is going to be one mess of a contamination area. We have a place where it's also still a residential that I was just speaking, that is going to expire probably within 10 to 20 years. And they'd want to build eventually homes, apartments, condos, next to a body shop. I don't think you, as a real estate agent, would want to sell anything like that. So zoning, it is for commercial purpose. Zoning that building to an industrial, it's completely a disaster. The person who bought the property, he bought it six months ago, and he must have bought it with the intent to use for that reason. If he made a bad mistake, he's a bad businessman. He didn't went and consult the city manager or the city councils to say, this is what I'm proposing. This is what my intention is. And if he spent millions of dollars, listen, I was in a finance company, and I don't think I would want to deal with them. So I heard you guys want to change the name to become a repair shop. The repair shop opens up loopholes.
30 seconds.
Loopholes means negative action. Remember, all you guys, I do for the election next year. Thank you, and good night.
Anyone else want to speak on the zoning change? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting will be continued till October 3rd. We have yet to have a recommendation from the planning board, and are still waiting for them to meet and make any suggestion to the city council. The next portion of our meeting is the public speaking portion. Anyone from the member can address the city council on any matter. You have four minutes. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Marty McAlpine, 20 Franklin Ave. I've been in the city of Chelsea now for, I believe, nine years, the last five as a homeowner. In living in this community, I have seen a lot of change over the last 10 years. I had a lot of doubts when the bike lane was put in, whenever that happened. I've lost track of time due to the last couple of years with COVID. But when that went in, I had a lot of doubts. As somebody who does not ride a bicycle, does not use the buses, but I can I can tell you that it has actually eased the congestion downtown. I drive through downtown now without a problem. And before, it was constant gridlock from all of the double-parked cars. Now, with having that bus lane, a driver is actually able to go around a double-parked car. We know no matter how hard the police try, there's always going to be some double parking down there. So we can't be unrealistic and think that that's ever going to a hundred percent go away. Anybody who says that that bus lane is causing congestion, I would tell you that does not drive down Broadway regularly. Because if you do, you move through much faster. It's safer when you are crossing from any of the side streets. I come home quite often down Fourth Street off of the Tobin, and I am able to easily see if there is traffic coming. When the bus lane was not there, you would almost get hit because of the cars trying to get around the double-parked cars. I've spoken with many other residents in the community from various areas. I know several of my friends who are also homeowners in this city have also submitted letters to the board in favor of maintaining that bus lane. So I just wanted to come here on behalf of myself and anybody else in the community who didn't really feel comfortable tonight to come out and let you know that I think it is a positive for the community. There are many other cities in the area that have the exact same thing. And most of the time, as a driver, I've rolled my eyes. But from watching it before and after, it actually does help. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Fuentes. I live on twenty-two Carroll Street. I'm a little nervous. I take the one-eleven every day to work. And since the bus lane has been put in, I'm very happy. I get to work on time. I don't think there's as much traffic as there was. I feel like if there is traffic, it's because, yes, there is new people coming into the city. There may be more tourists or whatever. And, you know, people don't know if they're going left or right. So me being from here, you know, we know which way we're going. And I agree with the lady who last spoke before me. It's easy to just, you know, go around. And I understand that, yeah, it says like five hundred dollar fine for stopping, for being on that line. And I think people who live here, who are immigrants, might be scared, like, oh, I don't want to get that five hundred dollar fine. But it is easy to just go around. They shouldn't have to be scared to just, you know, scoot a little bit. But yeah, I was talking on my way here. I took the one-seventeen, and I spoke to the driver, and I said, what do you think about the bus lane on Broadway? Do you think it's helpful? I know you don't drive by there. And he said, you know what? I think it's very important. A lot of the community, you know, they don't have time. They need to get somewhere. They take that bus just to get to Boston, and then take another bus, and take another bus, and then take a train, and then maybe take a taxi, just to get to where they need to be. Some people don't have cell phones. They wake up at five in the morning just to catch the bus. So I think it's been a positive impact on me. Once I got off the one-seventeen and got on Broadway, it's five minutes over the Tobin Bridge. And I'm at work on time. So I think it's a positive thing. I don't think it should change. There is a lot of new people coming in. So I feel like people are going to move here. We're going to welcome them. But also, I don't know, it's something about riding the streets, I guess. I don't know. I'm done. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah. I live at fifty Garfield Ave. And I am here to support the bus lanes and to support permanent bus lane in Chelsea. I have my master's in urban planning. And so over the past two years, I've had the opportunity to study transportation, to study housing and community development. There, I know some people are talking about their personal experiences with the buses and why it's important, and I value that. There's also two really main reasons as to why a bus lane is important in a community like Chelsea, right? The first one is that it helps standardize your commute time. So you know what time you're going to be able to get to work. You can coordinate your class schedule, your work schedule, childcare for your kids. It helps to standardize that. Even if it's not reducing the time, it's standardizing it, which is really important to coordinate your entire life around that. The second thing is that it really helps business development. So Broadway is a really important business corridor in Chelsea. Having a bus lane allows people to get on and off the bus a lot more easily. And so therefore, they're walking up and down Broadway, too, and spending money at the local businesses there, which I know that as a city council, that you all have really pushed and supported those local businesses. So it's also a really, it's a really big business case as to why we should have bus lanes. So I'm here to support the bus lanes. I encourage everyone to vote in favor of it. And thank you so much.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Miteke. I live in Central Ave. I usually use bus. So this bus line is very important for us because when it is one line and the other cars are on the other side, it is helpful that it goes soon in order to get the place where we need to go. So I support to have this bus line. It's very important. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Darren Rodriguez. I live on Parker Street, right off Broadway. I'm an eco-youth worker for Greenroots, and I think the Broadway bus lane is an important staple of our community. For many hard-working residents, it's the only way to get to work or school. Taking this lane away will not only affect adults, but youth, too. Us youths have jobs and school to attend. Getting to these priorities are already a pain. But to have a bus lane taken out without recognizing the benefits of the community is just selfish. Why are we prioritizing cars when many residents of Chelsea don't have the luxury of owning one? Taking away the lane isn't helping the problem. It's just making it way for bigger problems to form. Chelsea is already an expensive city to live in. Many residents work so hard to pay bills and feed their families and are barely getting by. Why add another expense of transportation with a car to their plate? If the city cares about its residents, then you have a duty to do everything in your power to make sure people are able to provide for themselves. Thank you.
All right. Let's see if he will cooperate. Hi, everyone. Roberto Jimenez Rivera, forty Eleanor Street. I'm here today to speak in favor of extending the current bus lane pilot program in our city. Over the last five months, I have spoken with so many people in our city, and public transit is one of those issues that regularly came up, especially after the fire on the Orange Line and the subsequent shutdown of that line. Many people in our city don't have the luxury of owning a car, and many others may have a car but aren't able to afford parking in Boston. So they rely on our buses to get to work, to doctor's appointments, and to anywhere else they might need. In a world that is so car-centric, it has been a breath of fresh air to see the city commit to putting our bus riders at the same level of priority as our drivers. These bus lanes not only reduce traffic and commute times, they also help reduce air pollution, especially as we move towards an all-electric fleet in our public transit and the MBTA. As our city continues to grow denser, prioritizing public transit is essential to the long-term success of our city. By offering better public transit options, even people who could drive into the city may opt to take a bus. And that would be a win for everyone. Otherwise, the traffic we have now will only get worse, and all of us will suffer. Thank you so much.
Hi, folks. Hi, council. My name is Sam Montano. I'm director of organizing at Greenroots, and I'm here to speak in favor of keeping the bus lanes. We know that when we expand to two lanes, that induces demand and creates more traffic. It doesn't resolve traffic. There's lots of studies that show that increasing lanes increases traffic and does not reduce traffic. Additionally, as Roberto said, we're trying to move to a type of environmental justice movement that really centers folks of color and low-income folks. And this is an equity opportunity for us to center people who are low-income, who have less access to cars, and with the cost that comes with that, as well as increasing the air quality levels on Broadway, which are currently atrocious. And we know that by putting less cars on the road, we create an opportunity for electric buses and improved air quality. Second, we also know that most of the folks who are making these trips are single riders in cars. So we're prioritizing the individual over the greater humanity, because if the individual is in the car, they're not carpooling, they're creating more pollution, they're creating more traffic. When we can incentivize folks to get on the T, in addition to being on the T, we can also ask for more funding to make the buses better and run on time and efficiently. Third, it's an opportunity for economic development. I've heard a lot of concerns about enforcement, particularly with double parking. And then if we do have a bus lane that is used during certain times, like rush hour times, that's also an issue in Boston. I live close to the Rosendale bus lane only. And people travel in the lane unless there's enforcement. This is an opportunity to create civilian jobs, to encourage folks not to be in that lane if it is during rush hour, and to encourage folks not to be in that lane when it's bus-only. So it's an economic opportunity. It's an environmental justice opportunity. It's an equity opportunity, and it's also a chance to increase transit options. Thank you.
I'm here again. Well, first of all, I'm a forty-six Galouli Road resident. I'm retired person. I wish this bus lane was there when I used to work, where I used to take that bus either from Garfield Ave or from Bellingham Square. It is great, and it should be there. But we need to do some that it needs to be fixed. Is there twenty-four hours a day? We do not need twenty-four hours a day for the bus lane. And most of the time, what's happening is you have business who have a delivery. When they come, they make a delivery, they double park. When they double park, they take the travel lane with it. So you have to go in and out of the bus lane. That is not a very good standard, because it says if you're on the bus lane, you could be fined. So what do we need to do? We need to fix that. We need to fix to have control on the time. We do not need twenty-four hours a day. We need the bus lane for the busy time in the morning. As I was traveling then, I would say my traveling was from seven o'clock and maybe six o'clock sometime, all the way up to nine. After nine o'clock, everybody's already in work. You can have open that lane. The restriction, make it softer for the drivers that I usually drive sometime that road. So make that, then reinstate it again in the afternoon when it becomes busy again. Two o'clock, three o'clock, up to until five, six o'clock at night, and then take it off again for the night hours, because there's not, the traffic is not as often. There's not as many buses riding that right lane. So the restriction, we need to be taking off or legitimize a little bit to protect the other drivers. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things to say. I didn't plan on talking about this. Donna Bon Giovanni, forty-six Galouli Road, Chelsea, Mass. I am for the people who take the bus. I was brought up in Chelsea, and my mother and father never had a car. My sister and I always took the bus into Boston or wherever we had to go. We took the trains. So all I'm saying is, don't make it more difficult for people who use transportation, the buses every day, going to work, coming to work, going in town shopping, wherever they're going. Don't make it more difficult for these people who live here, or whoever, even if they don't live here. Because make everything easy. People work so hard to make a living, to afford even to live in Chelsea, who now is, it's very hard to live here because it's very expensive. Why make things more difficult for people who live here, and people like me, I'm seventy-five, and I've lived here sixty-nine years of my life, and I love the city of Chelsea, even though we have many faults. But you guys all sitting there, including me and my husband, we have our own cars. But all of you over there, how many of you in the morning, get up in the morning, rush to go to work and wait for the bus, and come home for the, wait for the bus to come home? I bet not very many of you. And I still go into town, and I take the bus, and I take the train, because you can't afford to park in Boston or anything. You can't even find a spot if you can afford it. Don't. Think about the people who don't have the cars, who don't have a lot of money. Make it easy for them. You people are all sitting up there, and I'm sure you just don't use the bus like you used to. But I did as a kid. My mother and father, we never had a car. So I'm used to using the old legs and go. But just think about these people. Don't make things in this city more difficult than it already is by doing all these changes. Think about it. Just think if you didn't have a car. You youngins probably are spoiled, and you have everything. And my kids have everything, too. But when I was young, growing up, it was hard. Me and my sister, we didn't have anything. We had love. We had plenty of food in the house. But we didn't have cars. But we learned to walk to school. We weren't dropped off and picked up. We learned to walk to the playgrounds. We weren't, learned to use the T. We learned to do everything. Don't make it harder for people who live here, and people who want to come in and live here. Just don't. If you can just make it easy for them, that's what I'm saying. Whatever you plan to do, make it easy for them. Don't make it harder for them, because they have to do this in the summer and the winter. You guys, like I said, you're not doing it. These people get up in the wintertime, in the fall, in the rain, the snow, the sleet, everything. They don't have the opportunities to jump in their car, or have somebody to drop them off and pick them up. So all I'm saying is, please make it easy for the residents of Chelsea and other people that are coming in. Don't make it harder. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alvaro Flores. I live at one-fifty-three Congress Street. And I'm one of the guys always complain about the bus line, because I don't have time for the bus. I have to travel every morning, Kemmo Square, come back, drive my kid to school, go to Walton, come back to Chelsea with booze every single day. And I have to make it parking in the, that line, the buses, because I don't have a choice. There's no parking there. So you guys probably don't take kids to the school, because you're older than me probably. But I don't have a choice. So what am I going to do? I have to park in, double park inside every mo, I don't care, come in twenty, every twenty minutes here parking, pay tickets, because I don't have a choice. What do you guys do with that? Tobin Bridge, always pack. Always, if you cross the Tobin Bridge, seven-thirty, take me twenty minutes to get, store drive. I don't take the Pike, because too expensive for me. I used to pay twelve hundred dollars a year. So who's going to pay for that? I bring the business to Chelsea. And I live here. So a lot of people lose business because the bus. Nobody can park there. If you park in there, they cop there. That's fine, because that's the job they do. But what are you going to do with my tickets? I park it from my own pocket. Fifteen dollars, twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars, I don't care. I don't have a choice. I have to be claimed at the end of the year, because I don't have a choice. Bicycles, who use bicycle in Chelsea? How many people? Why you have bicycles? Nobody use it? Wintertime, I don't even have a time for myself. I have to come home, six o'clock, or come from work, pick up my kid, because I don't have nobody picking up my kid. We don't have a buses for drive my kid to a boys' and girls' club. What do you guys do? You don't guys drive every morning. I'm very sure you don't drive seven-thirty in the Tobin Bridge. I do every day, back and forth, back and forth. I pay tolls. Thank you, guys.
Seeing no further comments, we'll now close the public speaking portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion to accept and file the communic-
Twenty-seventh and August twenty-second under suspension. There are no objections.
Council Vito asked to accept and file both meeting minutes of the June twenty-seventh meeting and August twenty-second, seeing no objection. Both communications accepted under suspension. We'll now move on through communications from the city manager. The first communication- The first communication from the city manager is Tom Emmerzino requesting a request for a conflict of interest exemption from the city council regarding the administrative assistant. Dear councilors, in order to support the city council during the transition era time of the, of the new administrative assistant, the council has requested help from its former employee, Fatima Malera. Ms. Malera has agreed to assist the city council temporarily for its first meeting in September. However, because Ms. Malera is now fully employed with the school department, and does consider municipal employee for the purposes of state ethics laws, she needs an exemption vote by the city council in order to perform and be paid for this additional work. Ms. Malera does not meet all of the statutory requirements for the grant of exemption under Mass General Law, chapter two sixty-eight, subject twenty. She will perform all work for the city council outside of her normal hours as a school department employee. Based upon the above, I respectfully ask the city council to approve this exemption. A draft order is attached. Council Robinson?
Seeing no objection, that communication is accepted under suspension. We'll now move on to the communication received from the city manager, Tom Emmerzino, request for a conflict of interest law exemption for a Chelsea public school softball coach. Dear councilors, the Chelsea Public School wishes to hire a current DBW employee, Ms. Alejandro Arroyo, as girls' softball head coach for the middle schools. Because of Mr. Arroyo as an existing municipal employee with a financial interest in this separate matter, he needs an exemption vote by the city council from the statutory conflict of law orders in order to become a coach. I respectfully request that the city council approve this exemption. All work performed by Mr. Arroyo as girls' head coach will be outside of his normal hours as a DBW employee. He meets all statutory requirements for the grant of the exemption. What is the wish of the council? Seeing no objections, no objection, that communication is accepted under suspension. We'll move on to the communication from city manager Tom Emmerzino regarding a notice of residency waivers. Dear councilors, pursuant to the Administrative Code, section one twelve oh two, I'm writing to notify you that it is in my intention to hire Logan Lucio of Cambridge, Massachusetts, and Gachi Asen Kalitsia Glu, okay, of Somerville, Massachusetts, as a part ESO instructors, and to grant them waivers from the residency requirement set forth by the Administrative Code, Part Four, Section One Twelve Oh Two, oh one. There was the only Chelsea, there was only one Chelsea applicant for this available part-time ESO positions, but the applicant did not have any ESLOL teaching experience. I request you provide me with any comments on the proposed waivers in seven days. What is the wish of the council? Seeing no objection, with that communication was accepted and filed under suspension. We have a communication petition to the city council, next item. Communication received from the chair of the Financial Services Committee, Senator Paul Arfini, thanking the city council for the letter stating that the council's position and opposition of H.R. one-two-three-four and the resolution. What is the wish of the council? That communication was accepted and filed under no objection under suspension. We have unfinished business, we have an order introduced by Council of Ayinada. By this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorize city manager to end one-way Broadway that includes one lane of vehicular traffic with a shared bike-bus lane between Fifth and Everett Avenue Pilot Program, which was approved on January thirteenth, twenty-twenty, and revert back to the original one-way Broadway two-lane configuration. Do I have a motion on the floor? We have a motion to lay this on the table. Is there any objection? Seeing none. We have an order introduced by Council of Ayinada, by this vote, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorize city manager to make permanent one-way Broadway that includes one lane of vehicular traffic with a shared bike-bus lane between Fifth Street and Everett Avenue Pilot Program approved on January thirteenth, twenty-twenty. What is the wish of the council? Motion to lay on the table?
Want us to continue the conversation in subcommittee? I don't want to just lay it on the table, and then it comes back on the floor.
The, the, these matters are laid on the table, the committee that we held tonight is still open and can meet at any time.
Okay.
So all it takes is a councillor to request that subcommittee to meet again at some future date, and if there's that request made by any councillor by email to me, I will reconvene that meeting, invite the city manager and Alex Train back again, and we can continue the discussion. Nope, when you lay on the table, we just leave it as is. We have an order introduced by the city council that approves the interest of exemption pursuant to Mass General Law for temporary work to be performed by, by the, I mean, sorry, for the city council by Ms. Fatima Malera, retroactive, September one, twenty-twenty, introduced by Council Leo Robinson. Council Robinson?
And the reason that we're taking this action is because we need some assistance for the new administrative assistants that'll be coming in, and we know that it's a difficult job to be able to master, so we, we ask Fatima to be able to give us a hand in helping us out. So I'd ask for a roll call, vote on the adoption.
The clerk will call, roll?
Council of Cooper?
Yes.
Council Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Avila Neda?
Yes.
Council Brown, absent. Council Vito?
Yes.
Council De Jesus?
Yes.
And Council Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Tenor favor and unopposed, one absent. Motion adopted.
We have the next order, next order introduced by Council Roy of Ayinada, that the city council hereby appeluses a conflict of interest exemption pursuant to the Mass General Law, two sixty-eight A, section twenty B, for a part-time girls' head coach, coach, I'm sorry, softball coach for the middle schools to be held by Mr. Alejandro Arroyo effective immediately. What is the wish of the council?
Move to adopt by roll call vote.
Council Vito asked for a roll call to adopt by roll call vote. Clerk, call, roll?
Council Ray Cooper?
Yes.
Council Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Avila Neda?
Yes.
Council Brown, absent. Council Vito?
Yes.
Council De Jesus?
Yes.
Council Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Tenor favor and unopposed, one absent. Motion adopted.
We have a next order that the members of the Chelsea City Council appoint and affirm Nancy Lopez, a Chelsea resident, to the position of administrative assistant to the Chelsea City Council, introduced by Council Roy of Ayinada. What is the wish of the council?
Roll call, vote on the adoption, if there are no objections.
Can I, can I speak on it?
Council Vito?
I just wanted to let everyone know that I, I don't think we ever had a formal goodbye for Fatima, and so I just really kind of wanted to acknowledge her for all the work that she did here for us as an administrative assistant. We, there was another subcommittee that was formed between Council Brown and Council De Jesus, where we were responsible for doing the interviews for the administrative assistant. At our last meeting, we offered the position to one person, unfortunately, she was no longer interested, and so now here we are offering it again. I just wanted to let the public know that that's what was going on, and also just thank Fatima for all the work that she did, bringing us here, and also being willing to come back to train the person that we're going to hire. She really is a star, and I don't know if we ever gave her the kudos that she deserved, so I wanted to make sure to acknowledge her today. Thank you. Thank you.
Clerk, call, roll?
Council of Cooper?
Yes.
Council Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Council Leo Robinson?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Avila Neda?
Yes.
Council Brown, absent. Council Vito?
Yes.
Council De Jesus?
Yes.
And Council Judy Garcia?
Yes.
Tenor favor and unopposed, motion adopted.
Motion adopted, I'll be in contact with Mr. Eddie Els from HR to contact Ms. Lopez on confirming the referrals and the references, and hopefully we'll have her on board soon. At this time, I'll ask if there's any announcements, announcements, yes. Council of Cooper?
Good evening, Chelsea resident. I think I have a very important announcement to tell you. I go pick up my grandchild at the school complex, the Burr Complex, and there seems to be a big issue with the parking. The school, I know that the city council cannot tell the school what to do, but we also represent the public, the people of this city, which is very important. So I go there, pick him up, they have the parking lot closed, there is no parking for the people to go pick up their children. They have to go all the way down to Clinton Street to come back and bring, get their children. I think they should be more considerate towards the parents. It's okay, I'm not against education, I'm in favor of education, because education gives you everything, but I'm also in favor of the parents. What good is your education when your parents can't take their kids to school or pick them up? You need to be considerate towards them. So I believe that the school committee and the way it does business is you consider that the parents matter, and that they need to have a space for them to pick up their children. For when I asked them, I said, why did you have this closed? The reply that I got is, because parents are fighting in the parking lot. They're fighting, why? Because there's no place to park. But instead of you resolving the situation, what you did is you ran away from it and closed the parking lot, which will make the situation worse. If that was the case, why didn't you put a police officer, you have three of them now, you got three police officers now, every day, and they go in, and they make sure that nobody goes in and out of that parking lot. So in another words, you punish the parents of the children, because you want to run away from it. Don't run away from a situation that's caused, you fix it. And how do you fix it? You look at both sides, don't look at one side. One side doesn't resolve nothing, it just creates more problems. And that's all I have to say, and I hope that the school commi, I'm gonna try, I know that the council can't do nothing, but I'm gonna put some type of order where we have a meeting with them, so they can tell us why they did that, and how are they gonna resolve it and fix this issue. Because it's a big issue, parents have rights too. Without parents, you'll have no children. So in another words, here's my final say, a parent has the right to take his child to school, and he doesn't have to walk a half a mile to bring his kid to school. So let's so, resolve the situation, that's what you have to do, is fix it, don't run away from it. Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone who wants to suggest a name for a moment of silence, I myself have two names in particular. One is Mr. Barry Dwyer. He was a Chelsea High, longtime Chelsea High School track coach, and a longtime Chelsea resident, who we lost over the summer. And also Ms. Kathy Steck, who was a longtime familiar face, not only in the Chelsea waterfront and one of my father's original customers, and I remember growing up as a kid, coming in to buy a loaf of scally all the time, but also one of the most popular individuals at the Chelsea Senior Center, and I know that Tracy Nowicki and the staff are really devastated by their, their, the loss, even though she lived to a grand old age of one-on-one, maybe all lived that long, but still, it's a hard, hard, hard loss for this community. Are there any other names? Council Robinson?
Two longtime Chelsea residents, Betty Smith and Ms. Louise Robinson, Margaret Robinson from Spruce Street, no relation, just very close friends.
Consulania Lopez?
Also, Martha Caro, was the wife of Francisco Caro, the minister of twenty-seven Crescent Avenue, she passed on July seventeen, twenty-twenty-two.
Please rise to give a moment of silence.